All right, please stand for the flag. My flag is to the flag of the United States of America and to the government of this land, our nation, and our God, and your love, and everything justice.
The Eden Elementary budget presentation with Mrs. LaRosa.
Good evening, everybody. How are you tonight? I'm here to give a status update for Eden Elementary School and talk a little bit about our budget for next year. So currently, Eden Elementary School is, as you know, is in the hybrid model for instruction, and all of our groups are doing exceptionally well with this, students, families, and teachers. Everyone is doing a wonderful job following all the COVID safety protocols. They're doing a great job learning, implementing, and using technology. And I'd like to say thank you for our one-to-one Chromebook initiative, because if we did not have that, we would not be in the situation that we are in right now. So thank you for that. Our students are doing a great job when they are in school and following along with their Google Slides and videos that the teachers create for them while they are home. Our teachers are doing an outstanding job, learning tech, implementing tech, working together in teams like they never have before. And also, due to hybrid and remote learners, they are super flexible with our students, keeping them on track, keeping them up to date on their lessons and their assignments. And our families are being extremely flexible. Many are still working from home, have multiple kids at home, have Internet issues, so they are hanging in there and sticking with us. Eden Elementary School is doing a good job providing some programming, trying to keep with our routine programming that we normally do. So we have Garden Club up and running, following safety protocols. We just did a take-home steam night bag where the kids had different steam activities to do for each night of the week, following along some task cards and online resources. We're getting ready to do a Read-a-thon in the spring. We're planning for a COVID-safe moving-up day. Our second-grade tours will happen in a COVID-safe way, and we are starting to plan our field day. It will obviously look a little different because we'll have COVID-safety measures in place, but everyone's doing a good job pitching in, trying to make the best out of those situations. However, what we are seeing more fatigue the longer we are at this. I get phone calls and emails, hoping for families hoping for their kids to come four days a week. As Mr. Sortisio has mentioned before, our classroom's, physical classroom space here, this building looks huge from the outside, but the actual classrooms are, the square footage is pretty small. So we are at capacity. The families are the ones that are feeling it most, trying to provide that support at home. So... So, in order to get more kids back in school, we would love for the county to say we can go to three feet apart. So until they do that, we are in a holding pattern. If they do give us permission to go to three feet, we can bring all the kids back. I would need another lunch monitor to make that happen. All of my classrooms are ready to go with furniture and following those guidelines, but it would be nice to have another cafeteria monitor to do more. There would be a higher volume of cleaning happening with all the kids back and a quicker turnaround. Do you have any questions about currently what's going on at Eden Elementary School?
Mrs. LaRosa, just one quick question. So, if we do go six feet, and I don't know if you know this or Mr. Sortisio knows it, or three feet, are barriers needed or don't we know yet?
Oh, we know that. Barriers are not needed. In fact, at our primary and our elementary building, we have, we've been using barriers from the beginning. That's the model that we adopted. It's actually, it's a greater safety standard than that is required. But if and when the state adopts the reduction to three feet and the county would follow suit, I assume, we would not need barriers.
Thank you.
But we are very lucky. Most of our areas here have, already have barriers on our desks and in the cafeteria. So, no matter what they decide, we're, this building is good to go. Any other questions before we move on? Okay, so, looking to next year and looking at the group that's coming over from second graders turning into third graders. Also, currently, we have about 13 remote learners that go to Eden Elementary School, and we have about 13 kids that I call new homeschoolers. These students have not traditionally homeschooled. Their parents chose to homeschool due to COVID and expressed intent that they would probably come back to school once COVID was over. That puts us roughly 297 to 300 students in our building for next year, approximately 100 per grade level, give or take. So, for next year's budget, I'm requesting an additional grade five teacher so we can keep our class size at a reasonable number. We could end up with 25 or 26 kids in a classroom, and that does not include anticipated move-ins or return from private schools. In addition to that, we would need the co-curricular areas to go along with that grade five classroom teachers. Some, we have space in their schedules, but we would definitely need to increase the library position to cover that class, to cover the book checkout. And I'm requesting that, that puts that teacher almost at a full-time, similar to the GLP model. So I would request that that position be made full-time. And what that position would do, in addition to library instruction, book checkout, they would help our Makerspace be up and running and manage that and provide tech support for teachers in the building. I alluded to kind of the fatigue that is setting in with our students and families. So teachers are starting to notice some gaps growing. Typically, we do not have summer enrichment here in Eden, so it would be wonderful if we could run a summer enrichment opportunity for students, grades one through five. So our current kindergartners and our current fourth graders, we can use our formative data to kind of take a look at who needs a boost and offer ELA and mathematics enrichment for a half-day for approximately six weeks over the summer. If that can be accommodated in the budget, that would be wonderful. And then the kids can return to school in the fall, getting that extra summer boost and taking advantage of that time. And then, thinking about next year and board goals, we're hoping to just pick up where we left off. Pre-COVID, we were supporting all five of the major Board of Education goals. We launched our Makerspace on the last full day of school. It was our steam night last spring, so we had a steam night and our Makerspace launch, and then the next day, there was no school. So we're hoping to reopen our Makerspace. That's all ready to go. All the supplies and materials and stations are there. Continue with our Kagan Initiative to increase collaboration and cooperation, cooperative learning groups in the classroom, and a main focus on our science program, which will be fully implemented, K5, and that is Amplify Science, which meets the new New York State science standards. And the new program, the teachers that have used that new program, they love it. Do you have any questions around those areas?
Have we done any, got any feedback from parents regarding a summer enrichment program? In other words, we certainly expect that the kids need it, but are we getting feedback from parents and/or students saying they want it and they will attend? Have we sent out a survey, or should we be sending out a survey to find?
We could certainly, we could certainly do that. In my conversations with teachers is where the conversation started. They are interested in having this for their children, but we could certainly send out a survey. And following the model, we would intend to target a certain population by invitation for that.
Yeah, because, because I'm wondering, even though the children certainly need it, what is also needed is some vacation time that for the last, at that point, year and a half has been missed. And so I'm concerned that if we, if we offer it, that, that parents would take advantage of some of the other freedoms that they have and maybe not participate, even though it's likely obvious they should be, that your kids should be there. So, maybe we should, maybe we should find out.
Yeah, that's a great idea. And that's why in the conversations I had, we were thinking a half-day program to kind of balance it out where you have academics in the morning, but then you have the rest of the day to go out and play and enjoy yourself.
Now, would you be requesting busing for these students?
As of right now, no, but that's something we could certainly include in the survey to see if parents would need it.
Yeah, because I mean, it would be difficult if the students would probably be all spread out, but not such a big number. But if they, they would, part of it, they would, you know, arrange for transportation for their, their kids, or it'd be very expensive.
So let's, let's talk about this a little bit more. Really good questions. You know, the need is obvious for enrichment now, based on the last year and a half. But you've been a principal for how long now?
Four years.
Four years. And you've got a lot of experience in district beyond that as well. Have you seen a need for enrichment-type work in previous years, outside the pandemic?
Yes.
Yeah, because it's, it's pretty typical, particularly in the, at the younger age, age groups, to target specific children who have gaps in reading and ELA skills and mathematics skills. And while we call it enrichment, it's essentially catch-up. So that students, when they move on to that next grade level, are prepared. There's no way any, that any district in this country, probably this world, expects all of their children to be at the exact same spot that they were three years ago at the end of a school year. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about students who have significant gaps. And even if it wasn't at the end of a pandemic, fingers crossed that we're at the end of a pandemic, would you be presenting a request for such a program?
Yes, I would. Summer Slide is a real thing. And if you look at children who are doing everything they can during the school year and making gains, and then they don't have instruction for 10 to 12 weeks, they're behind the eight ball again when they come back in the fall. So focusing on those foundational, foundational skills.
Yeah. And so, the board may, may remember, when they first met me, we talked about, we talked about that pyramid of support for students, with students being at the center and all those other triangles that were supporting the student were to help them in their achievement. I would, I would consider a summer enrichment program to be one of those support services that hopefully, we close gaps and help children, you know, get to where we hope them, hope for them to be, in order to prevent the need for further services down the road. Okay? You know, the question about, about transportation is important. Transportation in the summertime is, is difficult because the ability to find drivers. So we have talked about that a little bit. I can tell you that what is in the budget currently does not include transportation. That is certainly something we can, we can talk about and, and toss around a little bit more if it comes to that. I agree with what Mr. Cottrell said about finding out about the need, but before we ask if there, if there's a need, a desire, we need to get through our budget a little bit more, a little bit more, and make sure that we can, we can support it financially. I don't want to put something out there and say, sorry, we can't do that. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Special education budget presentation, Mrs. Maxson.
Good evening. As I present to you our pupil personnel service budget, I'd like to first and foremost share with you that the number one driving cost of our budget is our students' needs and providing programs for them. On the next two slides, what I'm really going to capture, though, is what our changes or increases to our budget are, aside from programs. So the first budget impact for us is the addition of a program called Q Interactive. It's a software that will allow our psychologists to provide testing to our students in a technology way that allows them to have a platform where they can be one-to-one with a student, up to 12 feet apart. So they can be six feet apart, three feet apart, or 12 feet apart, and testing the student. You can actually see a real image from the software company on the bottom right. This program also allows for our psychologists to take the testing information and import it directly into the report. So why is that important? It's important because this also eliminates some of the human error that can go into scoring and navigating through those reports. So it allows for that. It allows for increased engagement with students who might get distracted during like a paper-based testing, and they can help navigate through that. The image is pretty small, but you can see that the child is navigating blocks in the bottom, and they're using a replication of a picture. And the psychologist is using their device at the same time where they get to capture notes and test scores that they utilize when they put those into the report. The other increase in our budget is a service called MAG. This is a partnership that we are utilizing to help maximize our revenue stream and filing our stack and allowing us to just increase that for our students who are high-cost. So what does that mean? So our students who get services that might have programs that are outside of the district or inside of the district that have higher costs, such as increased services around occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech, et cetera, who have a significant amount of services, if they cross that threshold of $37,000, it allows us to get some aid back on anything above and beyond that cost. And this partnership with MAG will allow us to just continue to maximize those eight dollars. Do you have any questions before I proceed?
So Mary, how do you do it now? Is it all paper-driven, or, I mean, spreadsheet and...?
So we actually started this school year, we started to work with this company a bit, but prior to that, we did enter everything by hand within the district to the system, to the stack system, between myself, my secretaries, and, and working with the business office. So a lot of people within the district were doing that work. And now, we just collaborate directly with MAG, who helps to do that. And sometimes they're able to keep the paperwork and the information more succinct to help us drive that aid ratio so that we can get more aid back and make sure that we're not missing something. They're kind of like our checks and balances.
Gotcha. Thanks.
So that we can maximize dollars. Yeah, you're welcome. So another thing that I tried to take a dive into, to just to talk about what our numbers are, and then, of course, behind every number is a child, their individual needs and their stories. But I did want to share with you kind of a broad look across our pupil populate, our pupil personnel population, so our students with disabilities. And I wanted to share a little bit with you around those trends and projections. So in looking at our numbers, you'll see a consistent theme across the next few slides. I compared from 2017, 18, each year, to the current year, and then I projected a little bit. What I need to say about the projection is that we're currently in our CSE season right now. These numbers are very unknown for projected, because we're currently having those meetings, as well as for our students who might be moving into district, our students who are transitioning from CPSE, who might qualify for CSE, meaning from preschool to school age, if those students should qualify. And then, of course, any students who might be currently seeking an evaluation, whether that's pending or have not been submitted yet for referral. So, in the trends and what we're seeing is that in 2017, 18, you can see that we, the number of identified students was 216, and then 2018, 19, 207. And then you see a significant jump in 2019, 20, to 230, and then last year, 240. And we're on track probably to remain about the same for the upcoming school year. And again, that's a projection. And so then, when we think about our student population, we think about also where do our students physically attend? A lot of our students do physically attend within our district, but we do have some students who attend outside of the district. Those students who do attend outside of the district are students who have medical needs, behavioral needs, or educational support needs that are beyond what our programs here that we have that we can offer. They have specialized programming and the continuum components that we don't offer within the district. You will see the following schools that are, or day school, center-based programming, et cetera, in the upcoming slide where we have had students attend. What I will say is that there are five listed here, but there are currently only three of them where we currently have students placed. But I wanted this to be a reference to you in case you want to go back and look to see where our students are placed and what type of programming that they offered there. So, the Children's League is a center-based program that we currently work with for our students who are in preschool. We don't often have school-age students go there, but every, occasionally, you'll see that there were two different years when we did have one student go there. And that is when we are looking for maybe a placement, or looking to see if the school placement back here at Eden is appropriate for that student, and giving it that following year. Randolph Academy is a special day school, and they really support the emotional and mental needs of students. Their main practice is restorative justice, and they really support those kiddos that have those behavioral needs beyond what we can support here at Eden at this time. Falk School, you'll see that we did have a student attend there in the past, but we don't have any students currently attending there. Summit is a center-based program that really focuses on autism and spectrum disorders. And that center-based programming, you will see that we do have one student who attends there. We are hopeful that there may be an opening or two in the future for some students who are, one student who is currently here and one student who will, we will be receiving for kindergarten that we're hoping for possible placement. And then, CHC Learning Center is the Center for Handicapped Children, and we do have two students that attend there. Those students are students who have, might have medical or more profound needs that we can provide for here in our district. So this chart breaks out kind of that information for you, where you can see our students who attend in district or in other, in their homes, where they might have a program where they have homeschool, and they might receive some related services. And then, our out-of-district is the five different placements that I just shared with you. That's at the bottom left-hand side. You can see that there's an increase in the second category, which is Randolph. Two reasons for that, we did have one student this year who was placed there, and we do have a student next year that's actually coming back from one of those other placements at Erie One BOSI's, who will be going to Randolph. And then, the top right is Erie One and Erie Two BOSI's, who again, offer programming that's not within the continuum that we offer here. And then, our parentally placed-in-group home, which we don't really have any control over those students. Any questions before I navigate to the next slide? The next is, what classifications make up our population of students with disabilities? This is, I know a lot of information on this next slide, and I won't take time to go over all of it, other than to highlight two quick points about our classification and what we, the trends that we tend to see here in Eden. So, if you look at the trends across the years, you can see that they stay pretty consistent. You can see a jump especially in speech and language impairment. That is of no surprise to myself or to others in the field who are in similar positions as myself. This is an area of need that we continue to see that's growing. And then, in other health impaired, that does make up a good population of our students. And you might be wondering what that really means. Other health impaired encompasses children with ADHD, anxiety, and other such disabilities. And then, our CSE referrals by building. So I captured here some information just to show what our referral rate has been like across the years. And one thing I can say about our referrals for this year, at this time, we do have 20 referrals, five of which were classified, four are currently pending, and 11 were ineligible. And then, that brings me to really thinking about what does this mean for us? And I thought about the next three years, what does that mean for our program? And what will we kind of have our eye on as we navigate forward? So in looking at and considering instruction, we're going to continue to audit and support our programming with the curriculum, the resources, interventions, and professional development to help support our teachers, that continuity and efficacy that's needed across the district, and increasing numbers of students reading on grade level. And then, again, as I shared earlier, the Q Interactive psychology testing, that's going to help us with timely completion of evaluations, thorough evaluations and reports, and just really maximize that timing, allowing us for precision and classification of recommendations. For technology, we continue to work through assistive technology, preventing our students with support, particularly with communication devices, access to being able to use the speech to text and otherwise, especially as we've navigated through this pandemic, that's been really important for us. And then, for public relations, continuing visits and communication with students off-site and with families, and considering exploration of a TIES program. So, kind of piggybacking off of the Unified Sports and providing opportunities for our students to be connected, for our students in the general education population with our students with disabilities, so that they can have more opportunities to interact with their peers. And then, as I shared before, partnerships with MAG and with BOSI's to help maximize our return of aid. Questions?
I do have a quick question, and it's, I'm not looking for an answer. And I'm sorry I'm putting this on you, because it's really not just for you, it's probably for you and all of the principals. But, you know, obviously, we're all in the middle of a pandemic, and there's a lot of inconsistency for kiddos. I personally, personally, I'm concerned about social-emotional well-being now and when we return. I mean, I've seen it in my own kids, especially my youngest is really struggling with this whole concept. She just said the other day, when are, when are we going to be normal again? I don't even know what to tell her. Like, we're getting there. She just looks at me like, whatever. So, are we, and I'm putting this out there to everybody, I mean, do, are we thinking ahead to what additional social-emotional needs we're going to have and talk of what the district already supports? Because I'm concerned about it, and I don't even...
Yeah. So what I can share with you is that I do have bi-weekly meetings with the social worker and counselor and psychologist at GLP and EE. And then, I also meet with our staff at the middle school and high school. And that has been some of our work. We've been talking about trauma-informed care, restorative practice, and those components. I did do a training during Superintendent's Day to launch the school year that was pretty encompassing of a lot of those elements. And then, as the year has progressed, the really nice thing that has kind of come to the educational forefront is that there's been trainings and resources, like I've never seen before, being offered to teachers for free. So we've taken advantage of some of those trainings. Panorama is one excellent resource. We've looked into some of their things that are free. There are components that are a paid side, but they've offered a lot of free resources. So, for example, they have a playbook that was shared out with all of our counselors, social workers, psychologists. I got the playbooks into their hands, as well as all of my special education staff. And in addition to that, we also participate in the Behavioral Advisory Council that BOSI's launched this year. So we are headed into meeting number seven with them. They recognize the, the reality regionally, too, and they've been providing a lot of resources, which is really nice as well. Again, that's also been provided to districts for free. So those are things that we are thinking about as well. But certainly, if anybody has any other suggestions or resources that they're aware of, it is definitely on our radar. We've talked, you know, at length about that and about the reality that kids are going to come back with some very significant needs. So, one of the nice things, too, that our GLP and EE provides, the counselor, she goes into the classrooms and she does second-step lessons, which does address some of those needs. So, the other thing is, is we implemented a CARES team. which does address some of those needs. So the other thing is, is we implemented a cares team. So it's a form that any teacher can submit their concerns on and then we get that. I'm on those as well. We triage that. And when we have our bi-weekly meetings, we make sure that they're getting several touchpoints. The family, the child, supporting the teachers. And then we created a flow chart. So that way when if we get to level one and nothing's really happening, we bump that up to level two. And then from there, there's a whole nother level of resources that's available. It might kick up to Jill Breeze, who is our CPS liaison that helps to support our district. And then from there, if we are not getting the movement and the support that we need there, it goes to level three and then to level four. So we have four levels in this system to get the families and the children, the resources that they need, whether it's a lunch bunch, whether it's putting them in counseling, whether you know, it's a short-term type of thing. And we're trying to provide support that way. So that's been an increased service for that. You're welcome.
So the board should expect to continue to hear more and more about levels or tiers. Those words are synonymous when it comes to student supports. I know you're going to hear a little bit more when our middle school and high school presentation continue as well. So thanks for that example. But before you go, a couple of things to bring it back to the budget side of things. You know, special education costs are a big driver in every district's budget. We have some significant increases next year. And just to reiterate how you started this, those cost drivers are for very specific, very high need, high needs children, correct?
Yes. Okay. And I'll, I'll give you a very brief example without going into a lot of the details, but there are times when we have students in the district that we are doing the very best we can. We provide them with the very best programming and their parents are great partners in this work and we're waiting for and hoping for potentially another placement for that child. And that would be a cost driver, right? So if one of our students who is waiting for placement may not be a cost today, but in two weeks if a slot opens, that child might've been on a waiting list for three years. And now that child gets put into a placement and that program might be a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Right? So then we didn't really allocate for that, but we got a placement and that that exact example did happen to us this year at the beginning of the school year. So we did have an opportunity where a student was able to go into a better placement than we could provide. The child is getting ABA, which is Applied Behavioral Analysis, which is very specialized for children with autism. And they're getting functional communication. So this child has a lot of functional communication needs where they're not able to speak like you and I are and communicate in the same way. So, and we just don't have the training and certified staff here to be able to provide that. So we were very fortunate and we're very excited for that child and that child is thriving. But that's a perfect example of what would drive costs.
So just to go, go a little bit further. In your graphic, you demonstrated that we have 238 students with an IP in this district, correct?
Yes.
Do you know what that equates to percentage-wise? Is that around, you're the mathematician, Mr. Sutphen was at about 23, 24%?
Well, enrollment's what, thirteen hundred?
Thirteen, thirteen plus. Let's just ballpark.
Less than twenty, twenty, twenty percent.
Twenty percent. You know, what's the state average? Do you know?
I think it's fourteen percent.
Fourteen percent.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so we're high there in compared to the state average. And in our work together, we're going to continue to look at that. Just like, you know, and the board's aware of this, so we continue to look at our district placements to determine whether we can bring students back to the district. That's always our goal is to educate kids here first, right? Thank you.
Mary, I just want to thank you. I think, I don't know if I'm speaking for the whole board, but this is the first time we've seen this much information out of your, your group and it's great. Thank you. I mean, this is what we're looking for, not budget numbers and things on those lines, but really what the program's made up about. And is, am I speaking out of turn here that this is probably the first time we've seen this type of, of information? And this is exactly what we're looking for instead of my, my budget's here and it's going here, you know? We'll work on that. This is the information we need to know as we move forward. So thank you.
Thank you and thank you for your support.
Okay, thank you. High school budget presentation, Mr. Lyons.
Good evening. This is actually my first one like this. Last year I had one quick one. I was sitting right there. So this is, is the first one like this and I'm kind of in a different place here. This is all I know. Two months we were in and all of a sudden we went into this kind of pandemic, freeze, pause. And unfortunately I only know the roller coaster. I don't know the Ferris wheel. And it's been unique. It's been kind of sped everything up in my learning curve. But what's nice is I'm, I'm starting to see the other end of the curve. And that's really what I want to show with some of our building highlights, but also with budgetary, looking out five years, four years and having some sort of plan. And if you look at the, the bottom of the, of this slide here, it's some of the normalcy that's starting to come back. And when I see the normalcy, what I'm saying there is you're seeing the excitement and the happiness come back to our kids. And it's important that while the data that we see here, when we were making the cohorts, which was a challenge in itself, it's ultimately to bring back that happiness and enjoyment and that sense of community that many of our students have unfortunately been missing. And at the bottom, you see the musical, we have the stars of the musical on the bottom of that slide. We got put up to that by Mr. Gould, which will be coming out something rotten. Our girls tomorrow night are in a championship game, but I want to, I want to really express that we're starting to see the ice break. We're starting to see the kids. I've had some informal conversations just how happy they are that some of this stuff is coming back. Mr. Sutphen is coming in tomorrow. Some of that normalcy coming into the class. And I just want to really express like, we're really starting to see the ice thaw and they need it because it's been hard. I really want to advocate for the kids. It's been hard and they've been working really hard. So we've had to make a lot of adjustments and actually what's going to come out of this is while we were forced to make many of these changes, we're going to keep some of these when we go back to normal and it's going to enhance our programs. And that's what we want to do is use this as an opportunity to do this. You'll see there, we have an online electives fair. And that's actually something that came out of this. We couldn't have it in our electives fair. So what we did is we created online videos, the staff to express what we have available because Chris Archibald's come up with a term that I've fallen in love with, that you can get there from here. You can get anywhere for me. It's that special here. And we're really trying to use that to enhance our programs, to show people we can do. I think the Hamburg Sun's really sick of me of sending in articles and stuff like that, but we need to advocate for our district, how wonderful it is. And while doing that in a cost-effective way. And I showed this to Mr. Certizio about the electives and the videos are good. We do have to enhance our, our website a little bit better and we'll get better at that. But I really wanted to show you some of the things that we're doing that are different that we did before. The level of improvement that our staff did is just been remarkable. I was proud in the spring what we did, but we didn't know what we didn't know. We didn't realize how much more we had to do and we were, we were hanging on for dear life. But we kind of regrouped in the summer. We came up with a plan with a hybrid plan and what they're doing is just amazing. And I'll speak with Mr. Pierce today, how much of what he's trying is going to stick and it's going to enhance his classrooms. And it's really going to allow us to get more data informative information as we make decisions moving forward. And especially when we try to find those gaps. I believe one of the questions about like, what are we going to do next year about mental health? We also need to find out academically, but also procedurally, we're going to have to reteach them to talk without a mask on. So there's a lot of things of work that we have to do moving forward and we're continuing to communicate. But there's a lot that we can gain from this. They're instructing in ways we never thought before. Down below, it's called Jamboard. Has anybody heard of it? Who's, who's heard of it by hand? Anybody besides? All right. What's really cool is it's, it's an online activity that you can do whether you're in home, whether you're in a class and it gives us formative data. And that's what we want to use this opportunity to show us ways that we can enhance our instruction and suck more kids in because the more that we get them sucked in, the more data we get. And the more that they can perform and then we can find the gaps and find those deficiencies. Lot of instructional models. We're really creating three separate instructional models within the hybrid version. We have the in-person, those in front of you. But then we have the remote live just that day, for whatever reason that is. And then we have those that are permanently remote. So it's really three kind of instructional models within that hybrid model. So they prep for all three of those and they've been doing a really good job. It's, it's been exhausting. It's like a first-year teacher, but they doing, been doing a really nice job. And the, the positive of this is they've collaborated like they never have. We call them PLCs, like grade levels. A lot of times you used to stay in your department, just kind of talk social studies, talk science. Now it's, oh my gosh, what is this student doing in your room? What's working in your room? Can you show me Jamboard? Can you show me Whiteboard? Now it's, it's like never before and it's really exciting to see how they're starting to use each other to learn from each other. The other thing that we really had to enhance and Mr. Certizio brought this up is support. The, the mental health issue obviously, but there's academic support. And we've had to come up with a plan and we kind of went to a, I don't know if it was a conference or something and we, we kind of adjusted it for our needs, that multi-tiered system of supports with Mr. Certizio was very familiar with. It was new this year. We want to grow it, but what we want to do is help students be successful. But we don't want to use strategies that don't work, such as I'd email them 70 times and they don't respond. Well, maybe we shouldn't email anymore. Maybe we should find a better way to communicate. Maybe we, we meet with them personally, give them a phone call, but we're trying to have these supports. Okay. And then it could be where we work with them in learning lab. It could be that if there's some sort of like after-school Zoom, but we're trying to not just, well, they've fallen off the radar. It's just not acceptable. We're not going to allow that to happen. We also have our student support team. It's never been demanded so much of reaching out to students that are mentally in need. They're just stressed, mental health. And it's just amazing what our counselors have been doing a lot with the teachers. The goal is to continue to expand and enhance the MTSS as we move forward. It will, will happen over time, but that certainly is one of our long-term goals. In addition to reaching out to students that maybe are struggling a little bit is we have a three to eight week, three and an eight week reminder if they're struggling academically. It's been really good because I've had students come up to me, Mr. Lyons, I'm sorry, I'm not failing anything. I'm like, okay. We're just trying to make sure that you knew ahead of time. We don't want to be reactive. We want to be proactive and help them before they're either ineligible or failing. All right. So with students, like I said, I don't have a frame of reference like Mrs. LaRosa or Mr. Savoni have about what they've done in the past, but for me, it's just been incredible how much we, we've been communicating with students. I think I got up to 275 of my high school students that I called personally and spoke either to their parents or the student. And it was, how are you doing? What can we do better? And it took a long time. And I forget the principal from Silver Creek. He told me I was crazy for trying, trying to do it. I said, but I can't get the information unless I do it. And I've continued that as we came back after the winter break to find out what's happening in the trenches. How are you doing? What can we do better? It's always, and what can we do for you? And it's been very helpful. So have my counselors been doing the same thing. And the other thing that we brought in, I'm laughing because I get made fun of the word, the respite. We've been giving them respits over breaks where they can mentally kind of really shut down. If you, if you think there's an assignment coming over a holiday break or the spring break, you're never going to really shut down. So it's a way to really detach, rest, and then we take the two days before the break, after the break where work's not due. And I got a lot of nice emails from students. I don't get those a lot. But I also got a lot from parents because they said then they could see that their children were kind of relaxing, going to the mental health as well. So that was one of our goals to completely unplug and recharge. Parents have informed me that they, what we've been trying to use the global messages and as opposed to coming out like three times a day where your phone was ringing three times a day, like we're, we're trying to like really be selective when we send a global message home. So they're more likely to listen to it and pay attention to it. We have had some requests to come back four days. We try to honor them when we can. Sometimes there's space limitations. We're still at six feet, not three feet. But we try to do that on a selective basis when we can. We do those phone check-ins and we're getting a lot of good feedback on some of the changes with the online athletics that parents can watch it or grandparents from Arizona, which is a nice thing. I know Mr. Zito wasn't happy the other night because he said it was kept on going out. And he called his son who got ahold of Mr. Iwanko. Yeah, he was, he, he was not happy, but he, he called right back when it came back on. So. But that's, that's one of the positives in addition to some of the other online things that we have. What our focus is for next year from a budgetary standpoint is to maintain our, our comprehensive high school curriculum program and those supports that we have. We know there's going to be some gaps that we're going to need to fill in, not just next year. Some of those may show up in two years. Because if you're in Algebra I, you won't be in Algebra II until two years from, because you go to geometry next and then you go to algebra. So some of those gaps may not show themselves for two years. So we have to prepare for those through maintaining our programs. We also want to continue to give the options and up in the top right, you see Wyatt Shafer working on the chopper club. We got that back. And those type of things, including our CTE programs, our advanced classes, which are still going on, Hilbert, Niagara, AP, ECC. That's connected to that phrase, you can get there from here. And I mean it. We can do, our kids can do anything here that they can do at any other school. And I would say better than some of the private schools. I'm not afraid to say it. We're that good. Our kids are that good. I mean it. So just want to say like that, we do have an equipment cycle that we're going to try to make sure that we're very conscious when we do our purchases, but we want to basically enhance our instructional models. Any questions for?
So back to your jamboard. I, I really appreciate Kahoot. And I miss Mr. Feasley's, I used to have lunch with my daughter on the off days and sitting on the Kahoots. So it was, it was kind of fun. So I really like what the teachers are doing. The, the presentation and the quality that's coming across ever since they went to microphones and stuff like that has been phenomenal. So congratulations to all your staff for really stepping up during this whole thing and getting it done.
They've had good partners too. Parents have been great. You guys have been great. And honestly, students have been great. They've, they've really adjusted miraculously well, which is surprising, but it isn't. But they've been, they've done a really good job and just like they'll adjust well when we go back. I really believe that.
On that note, I think we as adults often underestimate kids in that capacity. I know, you know, we hear like the global pandemic and we stress and sometimes our stresses impact our ability to realize, well, actually the kids are handling it better than we are in some senses. Not to say there aren't, you know, gaps and, and questions they have and stuff like that, but thank you. It sounds like you're doing a great job. The whole school district is.
Thank you. Good team. I have a good team. Thank you.
Middle school budget presentation, Mr. Savoni.
Okay. Good evening, Board of Ed, Mr. Certizio, Ms. Feldman, Ms. Thomasulo. Great to be here tonight. My name is Jeff Savoni. I'm the middle school principal. So actually pretty excited to present for the middle school. It's been a certainly one heck of a year. I start my slideshow off with just showing the board some data around who we have in on our different cohort days. We're at about 55 plus percent on each of our different cohort days. And that number is probably even a little bit higher today. Just because we work really hard on getting any kids that we can back in the building and we do talk to a lot of parents. We do get a lot of requests and when we can do it safely and within our limits, we do it. We know how important that is for our students. So out of our 277 students on, you know, CE and F, we've got 55% and then 50, is that eight? So you know, we have a lot of kids coming in the So, you know, we have a lot of kids coming in the building. And throughout the year, we've brought a lot of students back from full remote and from two day to four days. So we're, we're proud of that and we're excited to bring that to our families. Some of the really great things that we've continued in the middle level are all of these great school activities. We talk about, Ms. Horstel talks about mental health. These are the parts and the pieces in a school that keep kids strong, keep the adults strong, keep the, the parents, you know, and the students engaged. And if you look at this list, and you know, I can't take a lot of credit for these things. I partner with all of our teacher leaders and our middle school staff. But these are the kinds of fun things that we've been doing at Eden Middle School. We did a pop-up literacy night sponsored through our Student Council. Where right before February break, we had students pull up to a tent, grab a cool little goodie bag of fun literacy-centered activities that they could do over February break. Great turnout for that. We had teachers out. We had a tent next to the food service tent. Kids loved it. We did a fun Christmas ornament decoration where students decorated. We collected them and then we brought them to the nursing home in Eden. The people at the nursing home absolutely loved it. They couldn't thank us enough. We did a cool photo contest where we said, students, get out of the house, take a walk in the woods, take a walk in your yard, take some photos. And we posted them, we voted on them and we gave a prize to a student. We raised money for cancer through Susan Coleman. We have an upcoming math and science night that we're working with Fredonia. We don't know how that'll look, but we're hoping it's more interactive than virtual. We just had a great spirit week a couple of weeks ago. Kids get pumped for this stuff. Teachers are dressing up, you know, we're dressing up as principals. We're trying to keep the mood positive and, and just keep them a little bit excited about being in school throughout all of this. One really neat initiative we've done this year, and I've got to give a little shout out to Bill O'Hare. He's our new health teacher. Is we're doing this career connection piece where we highlight a profession for about 40 minutes on a Wednesday. He, he offers it to the whole, the whole school. We had a producer from the Buffalo Bills our first week. And then we struggled to get somebody. We had Sean Bishop do it last week. It was our biggest turnout. He brought props in. You know, talk about great use of our SRO program. He was, the kids loved it. And he spoke for about 50 minutes, 40 to 50 minutes on police work, how you get in the career, what education do you need? What's the job like? So that, that's just something brand new that came out of this year. That's just been an exciting part of our, of our school. We still continue our student of the month program. We send letters home. We honor these kids. We never wanted to let go of supporting student success. Questions on this slide? Good. Okay, so when I created this presentation, we all kind of used a similar template. But we thought about, you know, these four big pieces of the school, you know, the students, the parents, teachers and the supports. So when you look at our students, in my mind, our instructional models for being in this pandemic are working. You know, they're certainly not perfect, but we have come so far from that day when we shut down the building. Didn't know what we were doing, like we've all talked about. The growth I've seen, the risks teachers will take, the energy, the work, our kids, our parents, the teachers, administrators has truly just been incredible to watch it. You know, I've been at Eden, this is my eighth year. So I can, I do know the Ferris wheel. But every administrator, every teacher, every parent, every student in the world is now dealing with this pandemic. So from my perspective, to see what are, where we've come and what our students now have offered to them is just, just great. To answer Ms. Horchel, our focus constantly is on the social emotional health of our students. I would almost say it's our top priority. And it's, it has to do with communication, it's partnerships, it's talking to students, it's calling parents, it's meeting with counselors. And the more we communicate, that's one, you know, silver lining in this whole thing is the communication has just blown up. How many meetings we have and how much we call and we use Wednesdays to reach out and all of these teams that get together to talk about students and their health and home life. You know, because this is hard in school for these students. Home life's not easy either. We know this. A lot of us have kids, a lot of us are, can empathize with all of this, all these other stuff. So we, Ms. Horchel, that is such a big deal daily in our, in our life up at the middle and high school. Thank goodness for Google Classroom. Just my, my third bullet point. I mean, what a, what a saving grace that we had a one-to-one initiative and that we were already sort of dabbling with Google Classroom. But boy, oh, boy, it made it easy to hit the ground running and just attack this thing. And we've gotten good with Google. Student-teacher communication is through the roof. I mean, email, Zoom, Google Classroom, the chats, all of that has just been, been phenomenal. Athletics came back. We had a great modified season. It was a ton of fun to watch basketball. We had bowling, bringing that normalcy to students' lives. Parents and families, they've been great partners. You know, I don't get a lot of calls of complaints. We hear a lot of good stuff. We call, we ask parents how it's going. We've built those relationships, so I feel that they answer very honestly. I always feel that Eden parents are very honest with us when we talk to them. They've just been great partners. It's been a great collaboration and we adjust and we move as we need to with parents and students as best we can. I mentioned this earlier. We try to honor requests to bring our kids back if we can fit them. You know, it's funny, we, we sometimes will have two students, it can be brother and sister, and we can bring one, but not the other. And that's a tough conversation that we have, but sometimes that's just reality. And parents, parents accept it. They don't always love it, but they can, they can accept it when we back it with facts and data. So tons of phone calls. I don't know if you guys have seen this or not, but we have a great middle school newsletter on the middle school website called Parents Make the Difference. And it is updated monthly. And I will typically send an email blast or a text blast asking parents to look at it. But it's just a great little easy read resource. Teachers, I mean, what, I can't say enough, true professionals through this. We started off being in full quarantine. We didn't know what we were doing. Zoom meetings every other minute. And to just see where we've come in a year, the growth, how we've pulled it together. I thank them. I take my hat off to them. They have just done great work with our instructional models. And it's, it's not an easy job in regular times. And it's certainly, certainly not when you're, when you're in this type of a situation. Like Mr. Lyons mentioned, we are meeting as grade levels and in groups and PLCs have just been wonderful. Our teachers meet roughly 10 times a year in the professional learning community. That's what PLC stands for. And the goal is to talk about students. Where are their struggles, where are their successes? What, what in your practice are you doing that's working? Why can't I get this done? And they're happening. We go to these meetings. It's, the conversation is robust. We've got, I love this, this little bullet point is we have, I believe, two student teachers in our building. And we have a couple of student teachers, students that are doing observation hours. So they have to do 60 to 100 hours. So they come in, they do their observation or they do our seven-week stint where they student teach with a veteran teacher. And we're just thrilled that we can continue their profession because this, you know, this is not an easy time to be, to be entering. Supports at schools, like I said, tons of meetings. SST is a group of student support team that just comes together. We talk about students. We talk about conversations we've had with teachers, parents, and we look at how can we help people? MTSS or MITS, as we nicknamed it, is the multi-tiered system of supports. This really started at a base grassroots level and we didn't really think or know how impactful this program would be. And really what it is, is as educators, we take notes, anecdotal notes. We try to write everything down. Who have we met? What have we done? But you have this notes, I have these notes, counselors have these. We don't know really what we've done strategically. MTSS, and we're really in the infancy of this stuff, but it were, it took off this year. And it's just a tiered system so that we can check the box of every little detail before we right away want to send a kid out or right away think there's no hope. You know, have we used everything on step one? Phone calls, emails, you know, our learning labs? Yes, we have. Okay, we've checked it. Let's go to step two. How many classes are they failing? Have we reached out? Have we met with teachers? You know, and it's just a great way, all the information is there. The whole team around students are part of this MTSS. And there's just a constant dialogue and a work that happens around this document that guides you so that you really don't make too many mistakes. And we've seen great success with it. We don't use it on every student. We only use it when needed. And it's just been a great tool and probably it would have been great at any time, but no better than right now, the present. So it's been, that's like a positive thing that, you know, that came out of this. Last but not least, you know, our budget, we always want to maintain good programming. We're proud of everything the middle school does. We've got some, you know, a lot of new standards being implemented. So our teachers are, are always growing professionally. I'm working with Mr. Sartisio on some MTSS or the multi-tiered systems of supports training. Like I said, we're kind of at the beginning of it. So we'd like someone, you know, a professional to come in and help us take it to that next level. As a middle school, I'm, we've always talked about intramurals. So I kind of brought this up today and I said, you know, it's really not the most expensive thing in the world. And I think it would be just so great, specifically for our sixth graders who can't participate in sports, but really for middle school. Just to do something from 2:25 to maybe 3:05 and take that Tuesday, Thursday bus home and back, back what we used to have. So I'm going to continue to work on that. It's something I hope to bring in and just get more of our younger kids involved for, with some after-school stuff. Mr. Lyons and I, you know, we're, we're two schools, but a lot of stuff we share. So the, the equipment replacement cycle has been just a great way to plan for the next five years. I mean, we've got a family in consumer science with equipment. We have three or four tech rooms with equipment. This stuff wears out, 700 kids going through there. We have a maker space that really we never got going because of the pandemic. But we know that that will also wear out as we start to utilize it. So we want to start planning and being, being proactive in our replacement cycle at the, at the middle school. Really, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions or talk about anything middle school or COVID-related.
Jeff, this career Zoom meeting, what, what time of date does it take place? Is it at night, seven o'clock at night or is it right after school or?
It's roughly 12 to 12:40.
And so the students are in the building or, or, well, I guess now they're at home. I'm wondering, ultimately, school is school and the goal is to be employable once you're done with us at Eden. And I think that's a fantastic way to introduce kids to a lot of different things. And I really hope that you continue it. Maybe it's at, at 4:30 or maybe it's at seven at night. And we have engineers on there and we have mechanics and, and, and every week there's a different, or every, every other week, whatever it ends up being. Because I think that's a great opportunity now that all of our students are experts at Zooming to reach out to a variety of different age groups. And, and to have a school principal and a school teacher and, and, and to say, this is, this is where you should be. I, that's a really exciting program, one of the good things that perhaps can come from this whole thing. And, and I, I think if you reached out to parents, I think you'd find a plethora of different talents in, in all sorts of professions that people would love to share their talents. So I really hope you continue that post-COVID. Do it at a time in which students can log on where everyone has one-to-one, everyone knows how to use Zoom and make it, make it, start tuning into a basketball game, tune into a career evening. And that's a really great idea.
Yeah, thanks. It's, I don't know if I said it, it currently does it Wednesday. So we're asynchronous. We just have a handful of students. And it's happening around noon. You know, and Mr. O'Hare came to me, goes, Jeff, can I do this? Are you, are you cool with this? Because the expectation is that there still is school that day. And we made sure we weren't interfering with office hours or any of that that teachers might have. And, you know, it's only run two, two episodes so far. We're calling it a mini-series, but it's, it's picking up steam. And if anyone has a, you know, wants to be a guest or is willing to spend, you know, 45 minutes, it's, we need people. And we want to really show a variety of professions that students can pick their brain of someone who's done it. So yeah, we'll continue to grow that, Jack, so.
I just want to thank all the admin. Oh, I'm sorry, Lucinda. But, you know, this is what we were looking for. We were looking for, you know, what's going on? What's, what's the struggles? What's, what's coming out positive of this? Instead of my supplies budget went up $300. And I know there was some stress involved with this, with a number of conversations with Ms. Feldman. But you guys hit it, hit the nail on the head with what we're looking for. So from the building side, you know, we really appreciate what you did. And, you know, it was new and we really appreciate it, so.
Thank you.
Technology Budget Presentation, Mrs. Kerstad.
There you go. So I actually think Mr. Sutford just gave me a good segue. Since we decided to do a new format today, I decided this might be a good time to review our current three-year plan as we're winding down year three. How are we doing and what challenges did we experience during this last year with COVID? So our plan is five goals. Goal number one is personalized learning initiative. We completed the full one-to-one rollout of all of our devices to students kindergarten through 12 in September 2019, with grades 11, 10, 11 and 12 being our last recipients of the devices. We followed the same format as we moved forward up the grade levels in each teacher preparation the year before. Rolling out devices, we offered staff development for the grade level teachers in BOSI CSLO and our own technology integration team. So when we needed to go, just as Mr. Savoni said, we were actually in pretty good shape. So what we did have some challenges. There were some unforeseen things in the past year, obviously. If you read the challenges above, you'll see we, our current plan was for students' devices in kindergarten through 12th grade. We had not included pre-K. Our current plan, the GLP student iPads and our Eden Elementary student Chromebooks were never intended to go home. They were to stay in school. The need for additional teacher training for tools to teach remotely synchronized and acircanist. That became pretty evident quickly, quickly last spring. I'm going to close this so that I can see. So some of our solutions. Spring 2020 required dismantling the Eden Elementary Chromebook carts for their power cords. Since we didn't offer them to go home, we didn't have those cords. We could not do that with the iPads at the elementary or GLP because those were built in, they were hardwired. So we were able to offer to any pre-K student and fifth grade student the need for a device to take home for those, that spring last year. Fall 2020, using spare iPads gleaned from classroom carts in the GLP, we were able to grab enough to be able to give to our pre-K students in the fall. We ordered power cords for the pre-K through fifth grade students, so they were all able to take their devices home right away in September. Purchasing additional apps such as Zoom, Screencastify, Kahoot, EdPuzzle, NearPod, et cetera, for remote instruction. These were some of the things that we needed to do that we learned quite quickly in the spring. Our tech integrators are a team of three high school teachers who are two to three periods a day designated for technology integration. They prepare training on staff development days and they meet as many teachers as possible for one-to-one assistance when requested through our Q Center, which I know Mr. Bliss talked about last year, which we both share for tech incidents and maintenance incidents. In addition, they've been building a webpage and I do want to share that with you because there's just not enough hours in the day to meet. Oops, I'm going to go backwards. This website. This website not only has PDFs, but mostly it has videos. If you have a chance to go on here, um, you can see it's quite extensive because what we find is that just like anybody teaching in the classroom, if one student has a question, more people have questions than they're raising their hands for. So any teacher that was asking us, if we got two requests for it, they made a Screencastify and put up a video here. Because of all the new, uh, resources that we were using this year, which some of them are listed here, they were able to, um, make these little training videos and we've just gotten such positive feedback, um, district-wide from the teachers about this. So school community connections is number two. I think if you read through there, we've met and/or exceeded all of the objectives for this goal. We revamped the district website in the spring of two thousand eighteen, the first year of this plan. The new website required staff and teacher training, which was fresh in their minds for utilizing teacher webpages in a variety of different ways in the pandemic. We, we implemented a new VoIP phone system that was installed in the summer of two thousand eighteen as part of the capital project. So you'll see the goals of the challenges are pretty much the same that parents and students were having, that the teachers were having. So what were some of the solutions? Spring twenty twenty required dismantling and remote, remote learning methods, processing and student passwords to, to the parents and the pre-K through fifth grade. We were, uh, are disseminating, I'm sorry, online. So we were able to get the passwords to the, to the parents, especially in our pre-K through fifth grade. Our high school and middle school kids, they know what their logins are. But again, remember those pre-K and middle school or elementary school students never had to use them at home. Now they had to use them at home. We had to find a way to get it there. A repair for technology and assistance, assistance for remote learning and offering hotspots for home. So the challenges were how to support remote learning at home for all students. Getting devices in the hands was the first challenge. Sustaining these devices was the second challenge. In grades pre-grade through fifth grades, the teachers have spare devices in their classroom carts. When a student has an issue, they can swap with a spare and then they can, we can investigate what the problem is. At the middle school and high school, students can stop down to the student tech support office during either period one or nine, and if necessary, swap their device or get a little assistance from the tech integrators. Um, we can give them a loner while we check out their device. For remote students, we have been arranging loner swaps with the middle school, high school attendance office. They've been great. Uh, repair for older devices has been a challenge. Uh, our July twenty twenty order of replacement Chromebooks for grades eight and nine, which should have been replaced before the start of school is actually arriving tomorrow. I'm not kidding. We, I got the call today. Yay. Um, these devices are well past their expected life expectancy and required quite a bit of repair this year. Parents were offered again this year, the option to purchase insurance. Out of our thirteen hundred plus student devices, parents insured five hundred and fourteen of these devices. On the flip side, since September, we have issued a hundred and forty-one invoices to parents for damaged, missing or Chromebooks and/or accessories and a few iPads in there too. The biggest challenge for our department is the tech assistance calls from, for calls and/or emails from parents. They occur daily. They have leveled off since the beginning of the school year, but they're still pretty constant. At the end of summer, I sent out a parent survey on home internet service. This fall, we started offering hotspots to families with connectivity issues. Currently there are sixty-three households that have one of our MiFi devices signed out for the year. Typically, the same as with teachers, we tend to get the same questions from parents and students about accounts, particular apps, student devices. So once again, our tech integrator stepped up to the challenge and I'll show you this page here. They've built a page on our webpage for parents. Um, they're constantly updating this. And again, as we get those questions from parents or, and/or students, we're trying to put those resources out there because if one, one person's asking it, more people need to know the answer. So technology, equipment and infrastructure. SED has been requiring a six-year replacement computer, a computer replacement plan for some time now. The district follows this plan as closely as budgetary constraints allow. Other inventory items not required by SED to replace every six years, such as printers, document cameras, et cetera. We either replace when they reach their manufacturer's end of life or can no longer work on our network or can no longer be repaired or until they literally die. So. So challenges for goal three. Last spring, when the district needed to go fully remote with COVID, brought a new awareness of some of the changes we needed to make long-term. This is primarily for our staff and teachers. If they needed to work remotely, all teachers, clerical staff and teachers aides need to have computing devices for working remotely. This summer, per our six-year scheduled replacement cycle, the middle school, high school teachers will be getting their desktop computers replaced with laptops. Long-term moving forward will be to transition all staff and teachers to laptops as they rotate through their six-year normal replacement cycle. We also need to develop a long-term plan for aides, which were not in our original plan at all or in this current plan. Technology services. Our Smart Schools Bonds, the second project was approved in June two thousand nineteen. The digital security system installation was started in the summer of two thousand nineteen and was supposed to be completed prior to the start of school on September two thousand nineteen. The project was completed February twenty twenty. The VoIP phone system was completed in the summer of two thousand eighteen. The summer of two thousand nineteen, it was decided to move forward with the replacement of the PA systems and clocks district-wide as phase four of the capital project. The new system would be tied into our VoIP system. The project was scheduled to be completed prior to the start of school, September two thousand nineteen. It too wrapped up in February twenty twenty. So literally, if you just did the math, um, those two extra projects, which always doing a capital project during school is like an extra heavy lift. They finished about two weeks before we went out last March. I think I had two weeks to go. And there we are. So. So tech readiness. Over the last year, we've met and exceeded our goals on this one. The challenge is moving forward. I've started preliminary work for developing the next technology plan. Due to COVID, SED has extended our current plan to June two, two, twenty twenty-two. Still, it's time to start having meetings with departments or the PLCs and teams and start thinking about a new goal number one. Our top questions right now are, what have our teachers learned and implemented during this past year that we want to continue and what can we improve on? These conversations are already started and I'll be having a follow-up meeting with the department chairs on April twelfth. So in conclusion, I would like to just acknowledge my team. A very, very dedicated and talented people that have gone above and beyond this year, and I am very honored to have been working with them and be their administrator. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank the board, my fellow administrators in the district for their continued support and vision for the last twenty-two years in technology. I can confidently tell you tonight that following this plan and the plans before it, we didn't weather the storm. We were ready for it. So, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Discussion of potential scenarios for the budget, Mrs. Feldman.
Good evening. I'd like to apologize, but for some reason my camera's decided you shouldn't see me tonight. So we're going to, this is our budget workshop. It's the last presentation we will be doing before we adopt a budget. So at the end of it, there'll be some thought processes for the board to go forward because we don't have all the information we need yet. So, so far our budget assumptions are we're expecting a seven point eight three percent increase in state aid budget to budget or another nine hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Our expenditures are going up four point six three percent or one point four million dollars. So now we're going to talk about the detail at a very high level of what happens. So some of our expenditures were able to reduce. Our legal personnel and public services are going to go down eight thousand three hundred forty-five dollars or six point five percent. Our central services, which we talked a lot about last time, is our buildings and grounds and support staff. It's going down one hundred thousand nine hundred sixty-one dollars or three point nine three percent. A large portion of that is the building condition survey, which we are do, completed this year and we will be fully aided on next year. Our special items, which include some of our Bosie's capital costs, is going down twenty-six thousand two hundred seventy-one dollars or five point seven one percent. Transportation, we talked about how entering into a COVID world, we really didn't know what to anticipate. So that, as we have lived through it, a pandemic, we're able to reduce four hundred ninety-seven thousand six hundred sixty-three dollars from it or twenty-one point three seven percent of our transportation budget. Any questions? Then we're going to look on the expenditure analysis, the increases. The Board of Education, we are now budgeting in case our first budget doesn't pass, we have to budget an additional forty-five hundred dollars of the five thousand three hundred twenty-one dollar increase is to pay for a second vote. That's twenty-two point nine five percent of what is spent on the Board of Education. And I just want to point out, none of the board members are compensated for being board members. It is their community civic duty that they are board members. Central administration is a district office and that's going up twenty-four thousand or eight point seven one percent. Finance is the business office that's going up approximately fourteen thousand, three point three one percent. Administration and improvement is going up nineteen thousand or one point eight six percent. Instructional is going up three hundred fifty-nine thousand, four point three five percent. Programs, students with disabilities is going up eight hundred twenty-nine thousand or twenty-four point zero eight percent. Occupational education, these are the students that are going for the tech programs at Bosie's. It's going up a hundred fifty thousand nine hundred dollars, twenty-one point four one percent. Any questions? I want to point out, some of the aid, state aid increases we're seeing are for some of the students with disabilities when they are receiving the excess cost aid that Mrs. Maxon talked about earlier. Teaching special schools, that's our community education, six hundred thirty dollars, one point eight seven percent. School library, audio visual, which is actually the IT department, that's going up nine thousand nine hundred nineteen dollars or one point one four percent. Pupil services is going up forty-nine thousand two hundred nineteen or two point nine seven percent. You can see, it looks kind of funny because some numbers are small percentages and other numbers are large percentages and it's a percentage of their actual budget. Civic services activities is going up a thousand thirty-four. That's predominantly building use, three point five five percent. Employee benefits are going up six hundred thirteen thousand dollars, nine point five seven percent. That includes health insurance, the retirement system payments, the Medicaid payments that the district makes, all employers make. All those costs have gone up. Debt services going up twenty-five hundred dollars or point one percent. So in aggregate, our expenditures are increasing one point four million or four point six three percent. Let's talk about the revenue analysis. We talked about specific dollars last time. So school taxes. I'm doing my presentation with a one-two, point two percent increase. We talked about the state aid increase of seven point eight three percent. We get some federal aid and that remains stable. Miscellaneous, our local, that's things from building use right down to a loss book. That remains stable and we're projecting it to stay the same. Appropriated fund balance. It is determined by the Board of Education how much fund balance is to be used to reduce taxes in the next year. At this time, it is being presented at the prior year level. Reserves. This again is determined by the Board of Education. And once again, I've presented it at the prior year level. So when we look at it, our year-to-year expenditures, now we're going to go way up in the big categories. General support, that's all the infrastructure support behind education. It's going down ninety-one thousand. Instructional. This is what the kids are benefiting from. Our core mission is going up one point four million dollars. Our pupil transportation, we spoke about, that's going down four ninety-seven thousand. Our employee benefits, debt service, civic activities and interfund transfers are all kind of lumped together. And so they're going up six hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. So again, you see the total expenditures are going up one point four million dollars. Excuse me a moment. I have to move this. I cannot, there we go. Property school tax. If it is the board's will to increase it one point two percent from last year, that's a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Our state aid is nine hundred twenty-five thousand. So one point one million is at this point what I believe our revenues are going up. So our revenues go from thirty-one, two eighty-five to thirty-two, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand sixty-six dollars. Now leaves us with a budget gap of three hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars. At this time, we still do not have a state aid budget, so we don't know for sure. Typically, the legislature offers more state aid than the governor's runs to, and we're hopeful that will happen again this year. Especially with the American Rescue stimulus funds that are available. So where do we go from here? Taxes versus reserves, those are the revenue streams, the only revenue streams that are in the Board of Education's control. So the property tax cap, if we wanted to talk about the levy increase, one percent would be a hundred fifty-one thousand dollars. One point two, which is what we've presented this evening, is a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Or two percent would be three hundred and three thousand. So last year in May, a two percent budget levy increase of two ninety-seven, eight eighty-four was presented to the voters. And in July, the voters authorized us a one point eight two percent, two hundred seventy thousand dollar increase in our levy. Tonight, I've presented a one point two or a hundred seventy-seven thousand dollar increase to the levy. That is the big pot of money that gets divided to all of the taxpayers. And this would require voter authorization of fifty percent plus one or a simple majority. Any questions? So where have our true tap value tax rate and what is a true value? True value is if every piece of property in New York State is, that my formula provided by the state. Every property in New York State was at its market value. What would be the tax rate once we divide it out? So in two thousand eleven, twelve, that true rate for every thousand dollars of assessment was nineteen dollars and thirteen cents. It is down from seventeen ninety-two and nineteen twenty. What wound up happening last year, it came to seventeen oh three, down four point nine seven percent. As you can see, over the last ten years, five times it went up and five times it went down. Potential tax increase, again, based on a true value. So one percent of a tax increase would raise the levy a hundred fifty-one thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars. The actual twenty twenty-one tax rate, we talked about, was seventeen dollars and three cents per thousand. So the twenty-one, twenty-two tax rate at one percent would go up to seventeen dollars and twenty cents per thousand, meaning seventeen cents per thousand of assessed true value, meaning a hundred thousand dollar home assessed true value would go up seventeen dollars. One point two percent, which is what the presentation tonight is using, is a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Again, we start with the seventeen oh three from last year. That rate brings our tax rate up to seventeen dollars and twenty-three cents or twenty cents per thousand or twenty dollars per hundred thousand dollar home. If the board were to choose a two percent, the total levy increase would be three hundred and three thousand, three hundred fifty-seven dollars. Again, it would come from the seventeen oh three and go to the seventeen dollars and forty cents or thirty cents per, thirty-seven cents. Again, it would come from the 1703 and go to the $17.40, or 30 cents per, 37 cents per thousand, or $37 on $100,000 home. So right now, the tax increase is presented as 1.2%, or $177,589, $20 a year per $100,000 of assessed true value, and is tax cap compliant. Are there any questions? So the impact of potential increases to individual taxpayers, if a 1% increase, yes, it's tax cap compliant. A 1.2% increase is tax cap compliant. A 2% is not tax cap compliant and would require a supermajority. Closing the gap, if this board were to choose strictly using reserve and levy to combination to close the gap, meaning not to cut any expenditures, so, in 2021, these are the expected June 30th balances, we would have $205,393 in our workers' comp reserve. For our workers' comp reserve, we would not plan to use any of those, either with a 1%, a 1.2% or 2% levy. Unemployment, which is, our budgeted number is $26,208, our unemployment reserve, under those scenarios, we would use the same amount regardless of the levy increase, would go from $299,902 down to $273,694. Our ERS, retirement contribution, which is mandated by New York State, and it's for our support staff, currently, we have in our savings 2.2 million, and we would use in a 1% levy, 1.5 million. In a 1.2, we would use 1,578,000, and at a 2% levy increase, or we would leave 100, 1.6 million back, using $716,000 for 1%, $690,000 at a 1.2%, and $665,000 for a 2%. So as you can see, as you raise the levy amount, we are lowering the reserve usage. Our teacher retirement system currently has a balance of $300,812. In all scenarios, I would recommend using $100,000 of that to close our budget gap. Liability reserve, I would request that the district unfund $100,000 in all scenarios except for a 2% increase in taxes. Tax surchargeary, I would recommend we have $7,051 in there for a potential tax refund to someone because they're challenging their taxes, and I would leave that in there in all scenarios, because we don't have a final outcome to that case. Able-are, employee benefit liability reserve, we have $967,816 in there. In all scenarios, I believe our cost will be right around $75,000, and we would use, reduce those to $892,000 in all scenarios, because we use that to pay for post-retirement benefits. Our repair reserve, we utilize $250,000 of it this year to fix the Cogen, and so, I'm not anticipating any repairs, and we would leave that savings, because you just never know. So, the repairs, the reserves, pardon me, that I can use to lower the tax levy, would take our total reserve balances from 4.7 million at June 30th, with a 1% levy increase down to 3.7. A 1.2 levy increase would take them to $3,796,000, down from $4,788,000. And a 2% levy increase would take them down to $3,922,000, down from $4,788,000. So now, we have what we call voter authorized reserves. These are the reserves we're using to cover propositions two and three, and we cannot spend these reserves for any purpose other than what they're intended, and we cannot spend them without a positive voter approval. So, at the end of 2021, if we have no funds to replace what was used this year, we will have a balance of $964,000, and we are planning on using $568,000 for new buses and maintenance equipment. That would bring that reserve in all scenarios down to $396,000. Our capital reserve for technology, which is our replacement plan for all the items that Mrs. Karstedt spoke of, has $702,990 in it. And we would use, we are requesting to use from the voters $171,356, bringing that balance down to $531,634. Our capital reserve for building is not for budgetary purposes. When the voters authorized the capital power project December 15th, 2020, they utilized 3.3 million of what was in there, and the balance is now $225,298. You will note that no matter whether we do a 1%, a 1.2, or 2% levy increase, the projected balance in these reserves stays at $1,153,225. That's because the money in these reserves cannot be used for the budget. They can only be used if these propositions are passed and for voter-specific items that the reserves were created. So, our total reserves that are left, adding the last page, the subtotal from here, with the subtotal here, leaves us at 2021, we're planning on $6.6 million in reserves. If we use 1% as a levy increase, it will go down to 4.9 million because of the reductions for the reserves that are allowed to, under the board control. If we were to go with a 1.2 levy increase, which is what was in the presentation, we would have 4.9 million left for future use. If we were to go to a 2% levy increase, we would have, be going from 6.6 down to 5 million available for the following year in the reserves. Again, remember, these reserves here can only be used for the specific purpose and have to be voter authorized to use. So the Board of Education is gonna have some decisions to make for the April 20th budget adoption. One of the key assumptions is, April 1st, New York State will have an on-time budget, and we will know what our state aid will be. Last year, they were a couple days late. This year, there's conversation whether or not they'll be on time. Our hope is they will be on time, because then it solidifies our numbers. The next question will be whether to reduce expenditures, and if so, how much? How to increase revenue, remembering, the only two revenues that you have control over are how much the levy is to go up, and again, the voters do not authorize the levy, they authorize how much we can spend. And if you're gonna utilize reserves, if so, how much? And what combination you would like to be used to close the budget gap? Our remaining budget schedule is April 20th at 7:00 PM, will be a budget adoption, will be on the agenda. April 21st, the budget is due to New York State, so you can't not adopt a budget on April 20th. What that means is, if New York State does not have an adopted budget on April 20th, we will be forced to adopt a budget without any state aid final numbers. On May 4th, there will be a 7:00 PM budget hearing, and on May 18th, the budget vote, and at this time, the hope is that it will be at the middle school, high school auditorium entrance from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, as in past years. Any questions? I know my stuff is a lot of information. Historically, New York State has reduced state aid and backfilled it with the federal stimulus money, so we don't know if they're going to be allowed to do that this time or not, and we really don't have any specific aid runs. We won't know those answers. Hopefully, we'll know them April 1st, when the budget's adopted from New York State. This concludes my budget for this evening. Thank you for your time.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education enter executive session at 8:48 PM to discuss the employment history of a particular person or persons.
Second.
You don't vote on that, nor do we, do we?
Do we vote on executive session?
We don't vote on going to executive session, do we?
I think we do.
We do?
Do we vote to go into executive?
All right, any discussion?
Yes, we vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.